Public comment during the COVID-19 emergency. This meeting is in compliant with the governor's executive order N 2520 issued on March 4th, 2020, and N 2920 issued on March 18th of 2020, allowing for a deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The person of this is to provide a safe environment for staff and the public to conduct the city business while allowing for public participation during the COVID-19 global emergency. The meeting will be held by teleconference. The public may watch the meeting via live stream. The Community Media Access Partnership, CMAP, at the link provided on the city website, as well as the City of Hollister's YouTube channel. Public participation. In accordance to the executive order N 2520, the guidance from the California Department of Public Health on gatherings, remote public participation is allowed. Due to the December 3rd, 2020 regional stay-at-home order from the California Department of Public Health, members of the public may not physically attend the meetings at the City of Hollister City Council Chamber in accordance with executive orders N 2520 and N 2920. And guidance from the California Department of Public Health on gatherings, remote public participation is allowed and public comments time may be limited. If you wish to make a public comment remotely during the meeting, please use the Zoom registration link which can be found on the City of Hollister's website. Can we have verification of the agenda posting?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The agenda was posted on Friday, January 22nd, 2021 at 4:37 PM.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Abraham, do you want to lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
I'd be happy to, thank you.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Roxanne Stevens.
Present.
Commissioner David Hubei. Commissioner David Hubei, you are on mute. We're doing roll call.
Can you hear me now?
I could hear you now, yes.
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner, Mr. Chair Seth Munser.
Here.
Commissioner Kevin Henderson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have approval of minutes for the September 24th, 2020 meeting?
I'll move to make the approval of the minutes.
Second.
There's a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Communications from the public on items not listed on the agenda. This isn't time for anyone in the audience to speak on any items not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. When the planning commission calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and speak to the commission. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Please note that the state law prohibits the planning commission from discussing or taking actions on any items not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers that are not on the?
We have none at this time, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll move forward with the public hearings. First item on the agenda is site and architectural review of 2020-15.
Mr. Chair, I have declarations to make. The owner is Cymbal Investments LLC Managing Manager Ken Lindsay. Ken Lindsay is a current client of Hubei Architecture. We have not provided architectural services for item number one, but we have worked with Mr. Lindsay on other projects in Hollister and therefore, and we have received compensation within the last 12 months. Therefore, it would be improper for me to deliberate on item number one. I'm going to close out of the Zoom meeting and then after the deliberations have concluded, Abraham will call me and I will rejoin you after item number one is concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Hubei.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the planning commission, good evening. Abraham Prado, Planning Manager, Development Services and Term Director. The applicant is requesting site and architectural approval for the construction of a 44-foot in height, single-story concrete tilt-up building measuring 129,540 square feet. This building will have an attached 23-foot in height, freestanding canopy to the east of the building. The land use is a proposed delivery station on an overall 25.5 acre site made up of four contiguous parcels off of Citation Way in the City of Hollister. The delivery station would operate as a distribution facility that would receive shipments from fulfillment centers to be sorted onsite and loaded onto delivery vehicles for distribution to customers. I'll speak a little bit to that in just a little bit. The property is located within the M1 Light Industrial Zoning District of the City of Hollister and also within Zone Number Three and partially within Zone Number Two of the airport safety zone within the airport land use comprehensive plan. A condition of approval actually requires that the project receive consistency determination with the comprehensive land use plan from the Airport Land Use Commission. A condition of approval actually requires a prior to issuance of building permit, the determination has been made. And I do want to state that the applicant actually went before the Airport Land Use Commission at its regular meeting of Thursday, January 21st, and the Airport Land Use Commission found the project consistent with the Airport Land Use Comprehensive Plan with the condition. One of the conditions was that the applicant provide a no-hazard determination to the Federal Aviation Administration, the FAA, and they are currently working on that and hopefully should be getting that within the next couple of weeks. And however the condition stands and building issuance would not be obtained until that determination has been received and approved by the FAA. Also, the applicant is currently processing lot line adjustment for all four parcels essentially to be able to merge all four parcels into one. They could actually proceed this way with four separate parcels. It just gets very convoluted because they would have to record reciprocal access agreements and reciprocal public utility easements and so forth. So the best way to handle it would be to do a lot merger of all four parcels into one, which would make it a one parcel at 25.5 acre site. There is a condition of approval also that indicates that prior to final occupancy of the building, the lot line adjustment be finalized. And they do have an application right now being processed with the City of Hollister Engineering Department. The building floor plan would consist of approximately up to 10,000 square feet of office space and the rest, the balance of the building, approximately 128,000 square feet would be for warehouse use and that would include racking and sorting equipment. The delivery station would operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with approximately 170 sortation employees and approximately 190 delivery associate drivers. The shift work and deliveries would be staggered so that way it can avoid local commute times. For example, shift number one would be from 2:00 AM to 12:30 PM and that would involve approximately 85 associate employees. The second shift would be from 6:00 AM to 2:30 PM and would involve an additional 27 associate employees. The third shift would be from 1:30 PM to 10:00 PM and would involve 27 associate employees. The PFSD shift, as indicated in your plans and on the screen here, is a prime free same-day shift would be from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM with 21 associate employees which will work on sorting packages within the same-day delivery promise. And the RTS shift, or return to sender shift, would be from 12:00 PM to 10:30 PM with five associate employees which would handle all the vans coming back to the station and any packages that weren't delivered. Approximately 184 delivery vans would load and depart from the delivery station between 10:00 AM and 11:30 AM. The additional, there would be an additional approximately 50 drivers that would arrive at 4:00 PM and depart at around 5:00 PM from the project site. All vans would return to the project site between 7:00 PM and 9:30 PM. Deliveries are typical for customers around the area, residences and businesses within approximately range of 50 miles from here in Hollister and within approximately range of 50 miles or less. Regarding security, the tenant will maintain a security of their facility with cameras onsite and alarms throughout the building. Product is not stored at these facilities for over a period of 12 hours. It would be sorted and delivered, and delivered. And additionally, staff will be onsite 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The building would have an approximately 50-foot setback from Citation Way located to the west, approximately 410-foot setback from Flynn Road located to the north, approximately 500-foot setback to the rear property line, and approximately 280 feet setback to San Felipe Road. Normally, the city requires buildings to be closer to these roads, like in this case, we would require the building to be closer to San Felipe Road. However, as mentioned earlier, because of the safety zones of the airport, in particular Safety Zone Two that's located closer to San Felipe Road, there has to be a setback from that safety zone per the land use comprehensive plan. And so they are, the canopy that's to the east of the building is just like inches away from that setback. So otherwise, they would be closer to San Felipe Road. Regarding access, the delivery station proposes a total of 260 parking spaces that would be located on the north side of the building. 260 parking spaces would be for staff and clients. They would be able to access the parking area through Citation Way via two driveways. One driveway closer to the building would be at 26 feet in width and that lane would maintain at 26 feet because everything around the building should be at minimum 26 feet in width for fire department requirements. The other aisles on the 260 parking space client area or associate parking area would be at 24 feet in width. Also, there would be nine American with Disability Act parking spaces on the 260 employee parking area or associate parking area. There will also be 710 van parking spaces for the delivery fleet and 15 semi-truck parking spaces, 11 of which can be positioned along the south elevation of the building. South elevation of the building has 11 parking spaces for semi-trucks. Each parking space would have, would be able to, the truck would be able to back into the building and each, I'll show the elevations a little bit, but each will have a roll-up door for loading and unloading purposes. The automobile parking area for the employees and public would be accessed from Citation Way as indicated. Also, in addition, there will be a, at the south, at the south area of the parking lot, there would be a fire lane which would allow for emergency access to the van fleet area in case of an emergency as well. The applicant originally proposed the gate. After discussing with the fire department, they were able to remove the gate and actually have it as a red striped fire access with pool signs signage indicating no parking. Future access. The general plan of the City of Hollister currently requires that there should be interconnectivity between parcels and between neighborhoods. In this case, it is in the industrial area. Citation Way currently ends in the form of a cul-de-sac at the south end. And so therefore, in looking at how we can connect in the future to other parcels, we work with the applicant to provide an access easement for future development. So when future development of the west parcels occur, we would be able to punch in the road and be able to access to the west. We're trying to find out all the ways that we can meet the general plan and this was one of them. And the applicant has agreed to provide us an access easement for future development. When future development occurs to the west, then we would be able to create that road for interconnectivity. The applicant also proposes one crash enclosure at the south end of the building. One crash enclosure was one of our questions for the whole site. They indicated that actually one of the semi-trucks on the west, on the south side of the building would actually be used for recyclables and they would be able, a lot of their product is actually contained with the recyclable material. They would be able to use that to load and be able to send off to proper recycling centers. And so therefore, one crash enclosure would suffice for the rest of their refuse. They're actually also proposing two freestanding signs along Citation Way. However, they have not at this point been able to provide the actual full details. So the freestanding signs would come before you here at the planning commission for a different public hearing for site and architectural of the freestanding signs. Currently, there is sidewalk curb and gutter along the west side of Citation Way. There's only curb along the east side where the building would be. There's only curb, there's no sidewalk along Citation Way. There's currently sidewalk curb and gutter along the south side of Flynn Road and there is no road improvements along San Felipe Road. A condition of approval would require that sidewalk curb and gutter be improved along Citation Way. There was also a discussion where originally we were going to require them to actually improve with sidewalk curb and gutter all along San Felipe Road as well, undergrounding of existing overhead utilities, bicycle lanes and so forth. However, at this time, the City of Hollister is undergoing studies in regards to how we want San Felipe Road to be. One of the determinations, the city council has recently adopted a preference for roundabouts. And so Flynn Road and San Felipe has a future roundabout to be indicated here. And so therefore, at this time, because the plan for San Felipe Road is not ready, we would rather prefer that the applicant provide their fair share for their frontage improvements, sidewalk curb, gutter, bicycle lanes, everything that we would actually require them to do now, provided on a separate fund so that when we improve San Felipe Road, we would be able to improve the frontage. The reason why we're not requiring them to do it now is because if we required to do it now and the plan, when plan gets adopted, if things change, we wouldn't want to have to rip out all of the improvements already made by the applicant. So we would prefer that we have the funding available from the applicant for their fair share of their frontage improvements and then eventually be able to incorporate those improvements when ready and approved by the city council. The proposed 129,540 square foot building would measure approximately 255 feet by 508 feet and have a height of 44 feet. The building material would be of concrete tilt-up. The east elevation of the building would face San Felipe Road and would include six at-grade roll-up doors and four man doors. The east elevation of the building would also include the potential for 10 additional roll-up doors in the future if needed. And would also include a freestanding steel canopy which would measure approximately 50,268 square feet and would cover an area of about 60 parking stalls with dimensions of 11 feet by 27 feet for vans and it would be for outdoor loading of the vans for delivery. The west elevation, which would be facing Citation Way, would include five regular doors and no roll-up doors at the moment, but a potential for 15 future roll-up doors. The north elevation would be the main entrance to the building where the office would be and basically facing Flynn Road and would include a storefront glaze window system with four entrance doors. And the north elevation, as I mentioned, would be the main entrance into the building, would be closer to the parking lot for the employees and the public. The main exterior color of the building would be nebulous white and the exterior accent color such as for the roll-up doors and man doors would be a gray light color. And the top of the building and the top of the canopy would have a blue color. The overall site area comprises of 25.5 acres as stated. The overall landscape area would comprise of 6.49 acres, which makes up 25% of the overall site. The landscaping plan on sheet L02 and also up on the screen illustrates well over 300 trees throughout the site along various, and also along with various ground covers and bushes. The trees would consist of raywood ash, crepe myrtle, fruitless olive trees and others on the list as well. Approximately 94 of the trees would be located throughout the associate and public parking area along the north side of the building. And most of these trees would be crepe myrtles and fruitless olive. A tree would also be placed at approximately the width of every three parking stalls of the associate parking area. Approximately 22 trees would be located along the west and south elevations of the building and another approximately 131 trees would be dispersed throughout the van fleet parking area, mostly along the perimeter and throughout the parking area for the van, which is located to the south and southwest and southeast of the building. The project site includes the site's perimeter to be adorned with various shrubs and ground covers and the perimeter of the project site would also have common sage, pink cloud grass, English lavender, California lilac, dwarf curvy brush rubs and ground cover. Approximately 44 trees, most being crepe myrtle, would be located along San Felipe Road. There's one existing detention pond to serve for the management of stormwater located at the intersection of Flynn Road and San Felipe Road at the southwest corner for stormwater management for the whole six parcels on Citation Way. The site plan illustrates six new bioretention ponds for stormwater management. The largest of this new bioretention pond is proposed along San Felipe Road at approximately 870 feet in length and approximately 50 feet in width and with an approximately depth of six and a half feet. The proposed landscaping along San Felipe Road is meant to provide increased planting, appropriate berms and mounding to minimize or eliminate the view of the basin from the road. As you can see on the attached, on the screen, or the, this sheet was actually not as part of your plans that were provided to you on Friday. This is a rendering that the applicant submitted today to illustrate their intent to provide a masking or a block of the retention pond proposed along San Felipe Road. With that being said, there is a few things I would like, we would like to bring to the attention of the planning commission prior to making staff's formal recommendation. Condition number eight on the driver's solution provided to you addresses the noise during construction. Typically, noise during construction would require that the construction hours of operation be from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Saturdays and no construction on Sundays or federally recognized holidays. This project is actually located in the industrial zoning district away from any residential zoning, existing residential zoning districts. And one thing that we would like to add is that the applicant has a very strict schedule. What they would like to do is actually be able to, with the blessing of the planning commission this evening, be able to hopefully get building permits. And there's several approvals by the City of Hollister within the 15-day or after the 15-day appeal period ends for this approval, pending approval, and hopefully be able to break ground by the middle of February to start the actual construction of the project. And so because of that, that would require really, really strict schedule. And so there may be times that they may have to do certain pours or certain construction work outside of these times, being that they're outside of the residential zoning district, which we hold up very tightly to. The applicant is asking to see if there can be an exception that can be worked with the planning commission to allow for certain days to be able to work with staff, to be able to have them or allow them to do the pouring or construction of their work on times that would be variable or separate from their regular noise ordinance. So we would like to include on condition number eight that if okay with the planning commission, we would just like to have that acknowledgement from the planning commission, put it on the minutes and just include language on condition number eight that indicates that arrangement for overtime inspection services and payment of fees for same should be made 48 hours in advance and are subject to inspection, availability and approval by the city engineer. So in talking with our, with our acting city engineer, Mark Foggo, provided, he was kind enough to provide that language to be clear on the condition number eight. I'll make sure to include these conditions on the, when making the recommendation. 13II, San Felipe Road improvements, as I had just mentioned, the conditions basically indicate that the applicant shall design and improve at this time prior to final occupancy, all the frontage improvements along San Felipe Road funding their project. At this time, as I have mentioned, we don't have a clear layout for San Felipe Road and we would really be, it would really be sad to have them actually do the improvements now and then ultimately come up with a different plan that would require those improvements to be ripped off so, or removed. So therefore, basically 13II indicates that they should pay their fair share. They will actually be providing a cost plan of all the requirements that they have to do, the undergrounding of any existing overhead utilities, the sidewalk curb, gutter, bike lane, everything that needs to be done, they would provide that to us. We will review it to make sure that it meets the requirements, meets the standard and then be able to accept that payment prior to final occupancy and then be able to use it when the city actually does those improvements. So that 13 just basically indicates that change. Again, also with condition number 14, the project has, we did a study regarding acceleration and deceleration lanes on San Felipe Road and also on Highway 25 bypass. And so this condition, basically, the changes in this condition also say that they should provide their fair share of a, of their cost for acceleration lane and a deceleration lane. The study has already been done by Kim Lee Horn, the analysis of what their fair share would be. So we would just not necessarily require them to improve it, but just provide us with that fair share so that way when the city does improve it, we have that money already in place. Condition number 20 requires the applicant to install an oil grease separator. The oil grease separator, we talked with the building official and they wanted this condition because if there's going to be any type of maintenance on the vehicles, then we wanted to make sure that we identify the area of maintenance and have an oil grease separator to avoid any of the, any greases oils going into our sanitary sewer system. However, they have indicated that all maintenance will be off-site. There's not going to be any maintenance on the property. And so therefore, with that, staff was okay to remove condition number 20 requiring oil grease separator. Condition number 31 basically said that no floor drains shall be connected to the site sanitary sewer system. So we just want to add the language in red that basically says that no floor drains that are exposed to the weather, basically all floor drains that are outside should, shall be connected to the site, shall not be connected to the site sanitary system. Obviously, the ones inside the building appropriate to be connected, that would be okay. So we just want to make that modification in the red language up on the screen. Condition 62, it's, it's a standard condition that we have. Basically, as you know, when construction occurs, a lot of the times because of the construction equipment, trucks, vehicle, a lot of the times at the end of the construction, we have a nice beautiful building and beat-up roads. And so we just want to make sure that before we accept the project, that the roads are in good condition and if they are not, then our public works inspector will, will be out there and will require them with this condition to make sure that they fix the roads and that they, with the minimum of a slurry seal along the project frontage. Condition number 72, airport lift station. This, this is a condition, the lift station is meant for the sanitary sewer system out in the area. At this time, the, the, the project and the actual, the project for the lift station improvement is being looked at to be covered through other means such as a city grant for the future and other sources. So therefore, we are respectfully requesting- So therefore, we are respectfully requesting to remove this condition. It does say if deemed necessary, but it would be, staff would be okay to to remove this condition from the resolution. And finally, condition number seventy-seven, that's the access easement to the west that I, that I mentioned a little while ago. The condition, when you received it, members of the commission read that the applicant shall improve, design and approve the access. However, at this time, we would be okay with just accepting the easement, and they will be doing a study to see what their fair share would be. And so once that study is done, they will provide it to us. Our engineers will review it and accept it, or if they need to modify it, they'll modify it. And then prior to final occupancy, we will receive the payment for that. And when there's development to the west or when the city engineer deems necessary, we will then use that funding to improve that access to the west. And, you know, we would already have that easement dedicated to the city of Hollister from the project applicant. It's a thirty-foot easement, thirty-foot wide easement that they're providing all along the length of the property. So with that, just want to indicate, final thoughts. The property was, merits the California Environmental Quality Act. It's very big in California. The project actually got a, went under an environmental impact report when the subdivision was done in the early two thousands. As you know, there hasn't been a lot of development out there. And so the, even though the EIR is, is, you know, close to twenty years old or approximately, we thought that it covered a lot of ground for for the area. However, we did want to make sure that, you know, since then, there's been new law that has been implemented regarding the California Environmental Quality Act and new policy regarding greenhouse gases, level of service for for parking, for vehicle traffic. And so we actually did do an analysis, we did, we did an addendum to the environmental impact report. We did a traffic analysis, a noise study, and we did, we evaluated the greenhouse gas emissions. And so what we found, Chairman Munzer and members of the commission was that when this project was, when the subdivision was actually analyzed approximately twenty years ago, it was actually expected to have a higher construction rate and a higher vehicle trip. And so because this project is actually taking four out of the six parcels, it is actually less at one hundred and twenty-nine thousand square feet, it's actually less construction of an impact from when it originally was and analyzed back in the early two thousands, and less vehicle trips. And so for, that was one of the determinations that the city of Hollister as a lead agency determined that an addendum be made. And so therefore, the addendum was attached with all of the appendices to your, to your staff report as well for your review and consideration. And finally, just want to indicate that this is a great opportunity for the economic development of the city of Hollister. Not only would this project allow for the creation of new jobs that are highly, of highly need of this in in the city of Hollister, but also it's a great tax revenue for the city. Staff has worked very, very hard in collaboration with the Economic Development Corporation and the Chamber of Commerce, along with the applicant, through the application process, through the planning process, even pre-application process as well. This applicant is very serious, as I mentioned. They are hoping that with your blessing tonight, they will pull building permits and get their, all of their roof grading and permits within the fifteen day or after the fifteen day appeal period. They've actually, normally, when, when a planning commission approval occurs, the applicant usually starts working on all of the, all of the plans, civil, building plans, and takes them about six months or so to to actually submit to the, to the building department, engineering department. Just want to let you know that they've actually submitted already at risk, that, you know, there is, there's always a possibility that, that the planning commission can turn the project down. And so they've, they've invested their, the money, time, and created these plans and submitted it for the city already. And they've already gone at least through one plan check. And the hope is that pending approval today, that within, after the fifteen day appeal period, the, the plans would be ready for the permit to be picked up and them starting construction, breaking ground, they've indicated by February fifteenth, if possible. And with the hope of being up in operation by the fall of this year. So with this, staff recommends that the planning commission review the applicant's request, receive all written oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following motion, adopt the resolution approving site and architectural review twenty twenty dash fifteen, subject to the findings and conditions contained in driver's resolution with modifications to conditions eight, thirteen II, fourteen, thirty-one, sixty-two, and seventy-seven, and the deletion of conditions twenty and seventy-two. At this time, staff would be happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you for the presentation, Abraham.
You're welcome.
I did have a question towards the beginning of the presentation, and it maybe just some clarification.
Sure.
In regards to the security?
Yes.
You had mentioned that the product or packages that would be within the facility would, would stay there more than twelve hours?
Yes.
Okay. Which?
Chairman Munzer, I can't hear you.
I had a question in regards to the security that Abraham was discussing at the beginning of the presentation, and that the, the product or the packages wouldn't be in the facilities more than twelve hours.
Correct.
So I just kind of had a question as far as the turnover, the volume, and would they be, you know, utilizing the airport and airport traffic with this facility?
That's a good question, Chairman Munzer. The, the project is near the vicinity of of the airport. It is, we do have a long airway drive. We do have parcels that actually connect to the airport or are back into the airport and and require a separate process called through the fence. As you know, in order to have like airport, airplanes be able to come in and out of of the facility. This, this one's a little bit separate. The applicant, Mr. Steve Beecham, is is actually on, on the Zoom. He should be able to address a little bit more into that. I'm sure that they would be able to, you know, be able to have products fly into the, to the airport if needed. But I think that the applicant would be able to address that a little bit, a little bit more clearly.
Great, thank you, Abraham.
You're welcome, Commissioner Munzer.
Any other questions from the commissioners for staff?
Yeah, I have a question, a couple of questions. So Abraham, you mentioned there were going to be merging those lots to accommodate the project. So is that merging kind of happen at the same time as? Does that, or does the approval for that merging happen now, or is that something that's going to happen later, or is it already happened?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Henderson. One of the, when we did the pre-application meeting, we actually offered the applicant to actually submit a minor subdivision application. Sounds, sounds kind of contradicting. The application is called a minor subdivision, but it actually is for, it can be for subdivision of land or actually to merge for four parcels or less. And so the offer was to do, do it concurrently with this process and be able to present it tonight with the site and architectural and the minor subdivision. The applicant, though, per the subdivision map act, also has the ability to merge the parcels through a lot line adjustment, as, as mentioned in the, in the presentation, as, as you indicate, Commissioner Henderson. And so we would just want, we have a condition of approval in the resolution that basically indicates that prior to final occupancy of the building, prior to them starting to operate, they can actually start construction. But prior to the city basically saying you can start operating now, we want to make sure that the lot line adjustment, merging the four parcels into one, has been completed. And so at this point, they have submitted the application for a lot line adjustment to the engineering department. It's under review by our city engineer and city engineering staff, and the hope is to get that done within the next few weeks, if, if that. Was that, did I, did I answer your question? Okay.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, I do have a couple more questions.
Yes, please, Mr. Henderson.
Okay, the, so you mentioned this, they're trying to start in February. Do you have an idea what the total construction time is going to be?
Yes, so they will, their, their hope is to start in February, Commissioner Henderson. I think that that would be best answered by Mr. Steve Beecham, who is on, on hold for, and just raised his hand. So whenever the public hearing is open, we would get a schedule from them and be able to know precisely what their schedule would be and how they're going to operate for their construction.
Okay, that's, that's great. And I was wondering about the traffic flow of the semi trucks. So, I mean, if you're going on Highway twenty-five south, you could make a left turn onto Flynn Road to get to this facility. But to me, that seems kind of, you know, dangerous because it's crossing, you know, across a lot of northbound traffic. So I'm curious if there's any, any, anything being done to make that safer, or are they just going to say trucks should not turn left at that point and continue on to the, the light at San Felipe? So maybe that's something the applicant can comment on, unless you have something ever happen.
Yeah, no, thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Absolutely, I think the applicant can can comment on that as well. But, you know, it is the industrial zoning district, which, which anticipates a large volume of of trucks for that area. And one of the things that we indicated in our traffic study and in our cost sharing analysis for their fair share of improvements is that we want to make sure that they have, that they provide their fair share for the ultimate improvement of a acceleration and deceleration lanes for both San Felipe and also for Highway twenty-five Bolsa. So eventually, as airway drive and and all those different parcels are being developed, there's going to be more, more congestion in regards to, to, to traffic for semis, which, which is great. That's, that's where where they belong, and that's how we're designing the roads to make sure that they take on all that traffic. But as they come in, we will, when warranted, we will, some of the improvements would be the acceleration and deceleration lanes on both San Felipe and Highway twenty-five, and also a traffic control at Flynn and San Felipe. And because the city of Hollister has, has adopted a resolution with preference for a roundabout, they will provide their fair share cost for, for that improvement. And also, they, they actually are in the hook as well to provide their fair share cost for the, the actual improvement that already occurred on Fallon Road and San Felipe. As you know, there, there's a signal light already there. But, you know, there, there was a condition with that that when there's improvements such as this on Citation Way, that they pay their fair share contribution to that. So there, that's what they will be doing as well. And I'm sure that Mr. Steve Beecham would be able to elaborate a little bit more in regards to their operations and potential impacts there.
Okay, thank you, Abraham. I don't have any, Mr. Chair, I don't have any more questions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Any other questions for staff?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So the, the questions I have are not about the structure necessarily. It's, it's more about the business and the opportunity that it has for, you know, the residents of Hollister. I mean, I've, I've thought that for a long time, that this type of a warehouse and distribution center would, is probably ideal for a city like Hollister, just because of our location and, you know, because of rural, we have space, et cetera. And then certainly because of the potential for job opportunities and other things, right? There's a lot of potential for lots of benefits to the city and the residents. So my questions are more related to that. So I, first question is, I'm curious about the drivers and not the semi truck drivers, because I know that they have to have specialized license. But for the van drivers, could somebody speak to, you know, the qualifications for that and, and a little more about what the job entails? And also some information about, about pay?
Commissioner Stevens, those are great questions.
And then, and actually, my second question, I'm just going to ask the second question and put myself on mute and listen. So my second question is around this, it's just about the same, you know, about pay. And I'm just, actually, I have three questions, sorry. It's just in general, what do they expect, like the range of pay for the employees? Because it looks like there's a potential for about three hundred employees, and I would be curious to hear like what, what the pay range would be. That's my second question. And then my third question is about the description of the business as a last mile distribution facility. I, I'm assuming that that's not literal, because that's generally, I mean, that makes more sense when you live in a big city where you do actually do the last mile. That last mile is always the most difficult, because then you don't rely on, you know, the big freeways and the big public transportation systems and all the other things. So it's that last mile that always presents issues for big cities. So I would, I would like to hear a little bit more about what that means. Like what is the, the range that they believe the deliveries will be? Will be strictly in Hollister? Will it be in the surrounding areas? So that's my third question. So I'm going to put myself on mute and listen.
Those are all great questions, Commissioner Stevens. Thank you for bringing that up. For your questions in regards to the pay range and in regards to the certificates required by the drivers, not, not necessarily semi truck drivers, but the, for the delivery fleet vans, that would, that would likely be more for Mr. Steve Beecham from Panatoni Development, the company in charge of the development of the project. And so I would defer to him when the public hearing is open. But on regards to the last mile, we actually had the same question for the applicant. And so that was part, that was one of our many comments that, that we had as we were, as we were working with them. And so actually, that was actually comment number one, and I, and I have their response here. So their response is, and I'll just read it. "The last mile refers to the final leg of a package's destination for delivery to a customer. It arrives at the proposed delivery station, which in this case would be the Citation Way Delivery Station, being, being proposed tonight, from a larger regional fulfillment center. A fulfillment center is a separate, larger facility, usually farther away, where other aspects of the mail order delivery business are performed." So with this, and Mr. Beecham can can elaborate a little bit more, the fulfillment centers where the semis would pick up, would be loaded, and then semis would come into the Citation Way Delivery Station. And then at the delivery station on Citation Way would be the last mile, essentially delivering, loading onto the vans and delivering to Hollister and regional areas within fifty miles or less from the, from the delivery station. Your other, other are great questions as well. And I think that would be more in regards to the operations where Mr. Steve Beecham would be, I think, more appropriate to answer, if that's okay.
Okay, great. Thank you, Abraham. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Abraham, thank you for the staff report.
You're welcome.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at six fifty. And in regards to the public hearing, do you have speaker cards?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no speaker cards at, at the council chambers, but we do have a hand raised, well, it was raised a little while ago by Mr. Steve Beecham. Steve?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, yeah, thanks. Steve Bochum, Development Manager with Panatoni Development, overseeing this project. I just want to say, yeah, thanks to Abraham and his staff and the city staff. So far, they've been great to work with. I think we came to Hollister through late September, early October, and said, hey, can you guys pull off a miracle for us and get this project entitled and permitted and ready to start in February? And they, you know, agreed to that. If we met our deadlines, they'd meet their deadlines, and so far, it's been working great. We're, we're in Hollister, this project's in Hollister because it's challenging to get entitled and permitted quickly in jurisdiction, certain jurisdictions. And so we knew that Hollister was business friendly and also had this development that was previously developed and entitled with Panatoni Ownership Group back in the early two thousands. So it was made for a real easy decision to go there. The client or the tenant looks for places where there is good The client or the tenant looks for places where there is good job base, employee base. There are certain areas they don't go if the labor pool is limited. So they definitely, Hollister definitely hit that, checked that box for them. I don't have specific data on what the drivers make. I do know it's competitive with, you know, the market. They, they do offer good, good salary and benefits for that. And it does vary. Some of these drivers are independent contractors. Some of them are employees. And some of them can be as simple as, you know, an app-based driving option. So if you've got a van or a truck, you can do almost kind of like an Uber delivery at times for this location, for these businesses. So, yeah, a little bit more operationally about the project. Packages and parcels will come in, already boxed, addressed, and somewhat categorized based on kind of area and distribution. So there is no open product or commodity in the warehouse. There is no long-term storage. It literally moves through in probably less than a 12-hour timeframe. And then I think Abraham was clear in the, you know, last mile versus really their delivery range. They're usually out in a, you know, a 50 to 60 mile delivery range and servicing that kind of an area. And sometimes a little further, depending on how rural the community is. So that's the, the, the purpose of this operation is basically to distribute the product with their fleet vans that can be more adaptable in kind of the, the, the local community versus larger trucks and semis making those deliveries. So that's the, their operation. Those delivery vehicles go out kind of off-peak on their hours, usually around the 10 o'clock, 10 a.m. timeframe is when they head out on their deliveries. And they usually come back in late evening, 5, 6, 7 o'clock at night. So they minimize peak traffic conflicts. And they do that for their operation as well as to help the community. So that's kind of a quick overview on several different things. I might have missed a question or two. There are some office staff. There's about 12, 13,000 square feet of office in this building. So there are manager positions, supervisor positions, in addition to employees in the warehouse that'll be handling some of the sorting and packaging and loading. So there are several staff positions there, ranging from managerial down to kind of off, warehouse material handling positions. Anything else?
Great, thanks, Steve, for the information. Was there any questions for the applicant? One of the, the questions that I had asked Steve was in regards to the, the facility location and, and the utilization of the airport. Is that something that that facility would, would benefit from?
Yeah, it's potential benefit. I don't think it was a absolute determining factor, but I think it, it does check a box for him. There are times when there are requests for certain deliveries in a shorter timeframe, and having an airport in proximity can serve that. So it's, there, there's a potential benefit there. It wasn't their immediate reason for selecting this location.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. If we don't have any other questions, was there any other speaker cards on this item, Abraham?
There are no more speaker cards, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing down at 6:55. And discussion from the commissioners on this item?
I, I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, so I remember listening in on the, some of the G-PAC visioning that they had a couple, few months back. And one of the comments from someone in the community was that, you know, Hollister would, would be an ideal location for a, a distribution center. So I'm glad to see that, that their, their process like this is coming to Hollister. Thank you.
Myself is, I, I see this as a great benefit for the community as well as the, the amount of jobs that it brings to the area as well. With that being said, what is the pleasure of the commission on this item?
I'll make the motion to adopt, the staff recommendations, adopt a resolution approving site and architectural review 2015, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution with modifications to conditions A 13ii, 1431, 62, and 77, and deletion of conditions 20 and 72.
Great, thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and second for the discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And for the record, any knows? Okay, congratulations on the project. We're looking forward to it.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving on to item number two, Extension of Tentative Map 2018-4. Abraham, do you want to give the staff report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, if it's okay, we'll call Commissioner Heuwe back?
Yes, please. We'll take a moment for that.
Hi, Commissioner Heuwe, yes, please, if, if you don't mind, please log in back on the item. Yes. Thank you so much. We, we appreciate it. Would you like to stay on the line?
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Phone a friend when questions get tougher, Steph?
Yeah, that's, that's actually, that would be good. Yes, and David Heuwe would be a good one to, to phone. He actually is indicated that he's in the process of logging back in now. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
If it's okay, we'll wait until he logs back in and we'll start. Thank you.
All right.
Just like Commissioner Heuwe's back online?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, good evening once again. The applicant for West Tentative Map 2018-4 received approval for a subdivision consisting of approximately 208 acres. And for the subdivision into 60 parcels. And the subdivision is actually included in the screen. The location of the subdivision is right near the airport, just, just along the existing runway, just to the north of it. And the parcel would be subdivided into 60, 60 different lots. Got approval January of 2019. Lot number one, if you recall, actually got approval for a approximately 150,000 square foot building for a smart glass building there. And that actually is currently under, under review by the Building Department for, for building permits. And the applicant is working on the actual subdivision for the 207, 208 acres. However, the Tentative Map's approval per, per the Hollister Municipal Code allows for a two-year approval. And then the, there is an option for an additional one-year extension if, if applied for to the city of Hollister and granted by the Planning Commission. There is also various law within the Subdivision Map Act that allow for consideration of, of extension. But at this time, they're asking for a one-year extension to their approval. We did receive a, a letter from the applicant's engineer, Semenero Engineering and Surveying Inc. by Ms. Ann Hall. And the letter, one, one paragraph that was indicated in your staff, in your packet, basically indicates that on behalf of the applicant, Mr. John Nguyen, I am requesting a one-year extension to West Tentative Map 2018-4. This map was amended and approved January 24, 20, 20, says 2020, but 2019, with an expiration date of January 24, 2021. Actually, it was 2020. "Due to the effects of COVID and the resolution of the road intersection design requirements, the applicant has only recently been in a position to move forward with improvement plans. The improvement, improvements in map will not be complete by January 24, 2021. And now that we have resolved the intersection issue with Mr. Nguyen is anxious to move forward, but will require an extension to the map approval to be able to do so. They submitted the requested fee of $743 along with this letter. Thank you again. And if you have any questions, please call me." And there's her telephone number. Ms. Ms. Hall is actually in the, also within Zoom if there's any questions. So at this time, the applicant or staff recommends that the City of Hollister Planning Commission review the applicant's request, receive all written oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following motion: Adopt a resolution approving an extension to West Tentative Map 2018-4, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution. Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Great, thank you. Abraham?
You're welcome.
Any questions for staff on this item? We're, no questions, let's go ahead and move to the public hearing. We'll open that up at 7:05. Any speaker cards on this item, Abraham?
There is a hand raised by Ms. Ann Hall, who is the applicant, who is the engineer for this project. Hello, Ann?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm sure some members of the Planning Commission remember this project. And we appreciate your approval of the project. We are looking forward to moving forward with it. But as Abraham mentioned, we spent some time with city staff discussing some of the roundabout issues and various things. And we knew back in December, we would not have everything complete by this January deadline. We do anticipate getting it wrapped up pretty quickly here. But we would like the one-year extension just to make sure that we don't have any loose ends that, and, and we missed the January deadline, which is actually already passed. So, but we anticipate that this would be the last extension we'd be asking for, and we'd be able to go ahead and get the project moving.
Great, thank you, Ms. Hall. Any, any questions for the applicant? All right, if there's no questions from the commissioners for the applicant?
It looks like Mr. Heuwe is talking. Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ann, so on the, regarding the roundabout, can you update us on where you are on those discussions and negotiations with the implementation of the roundabout?
We, we had several meetings with staff and came to some decisions on what would be required on the roundabout. So we are planning to do a roundabout at Burt Drive. As part of, we're actually planning to do it as part of a glass factory construction because it would be required for the subdivision anyway. And then Burt Drive, I mean, what's called D Road ultimately may not happen right away because that one wasn't warranted at this time. But, so we have, that may wait until the future. But the Burt Drive Roundabout, we're looking to do fairly quickly. That would be part of, part of our first step, actually, like I said, with the glass factory.
And you feel that with the, if we grant the one-year extension, you feel that you can proceed with the project and get things done in a reasonable time?
Yes, yes, we do.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Heuwe. If there's no other questions for staff, we'll go ahead and, or excuse me, for the applicant, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing down at 7:08. Any further discussion from the commissioners on this item? Okay, what is the pleasure of the commission on this item?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the extension of Tentative Map 2018-4.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And for the record, any knows? All right, congratulations on the extension for the Tentative Map.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for the record, this is actually Planning Commission Resolution 2021-2. And the Citation Way Resolution, Site and Architectural 2015, 2020-15 was Resolution Number 2021-1. Just, just for the record.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to item number three, which is Site and Architectural 2019-10 Amendment. Staff report on this item?
Thank you, Chairperson Munzer. This is Eva with the Planning Department. Can you guys all hear me okay?
Yes.
Can, can you speak up a little bit, please?
I can try. Of course, we can pick up on my voice too.
That's better, much better. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So thank you, this item, number three, is for an amendment request to the conditions of approval for Site and Architectural 2019-10. And I have here on the slide, as a reminder to the commission, Site and Architectural 2019-10 was an approval to construct two duplex units on two existing lots. They're approximately .19 acres, both the lots. And this is at the corner of Comienzo Drive and Prospect Avenue. Comienzo Drive was formerly known as Hazel Street. So this is the site plan that was approved. And then Abraham, if you can go ahead and go to the next slide for me, please. These are the approved elevations. So they're both the same elevations, two duplexes, two-story duplexes on this site. And so the request today from our applicant is to amend Condition 62 of Planning Commission Resolution 2019-32, which approved this project. And this on your slide here is Condition 62, as it reads today. Condition 62 is for right-of-way improvements along both Comienzo Drive as well as Prospect, including sidewalk curve better, lighting, landscaping, and undergrounding of overhead utilities as required by our city engineer. And the applicant is requesting to amend this condition to remove the requirement for undergrounding of overhead utilities. The changes requested are on the screen here in red. So we would strike undergrounding of the overhead utilities and also strike them from the second aspect of the conditions, which is, at the discretion of the city engineer, the applicant could enter into a deferred improvement agreement for any or all of the improvements required, which means that they would not do them now with the implementation of the project, but they would do them at any such time as they're called upon under the terms of the deferred improvement agreement. So perhaps if the city had done a large project or that included the area around this parcel, they would then be required to pay for their fair share of their frontage improvements around the project. Or if there was another development of some kind, maybe in the downtown, that triggered a massive project in the area, then this perhaps would get called upon. So the applicant's request today is to amend Condition 62, as described here on your screen. And at this time, staff would recommend that the Planning Commission review the applicant's request and receive all written and oral testimony regarding the proposal, and either adopt a resolution which would amend Planning Commission Resolution 2019-32 to grant the applicant's request, amending Condition 62 for the right-of-way improvements as described on the previous slide. Amending condition sixty-two for the right-of-way improvements as described on the previous slide. Or the planning commission could consider the applicant's request and deny the applicant's request, which would uphold the findings of the planning commission resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-two for S and A twenty nineteen dash ten as originally adopted. And short and simple, that's what I have for you tonight, unless you have any questions for me.
Great, thank you, Eva. Any questions for staff on this item?
Uh, yes, I do have a question on on this item. So looking at the site plan. You have two power poles that are down at the corner of the, that's actually the south southeast corner of the property. Is specifically when we're talking about undergrounding the overhead utilities. Are we to define the location of that underground task? It would be to the point of connection be from the transformer of the power poles into the main service channel of the buildings. Is that correct?
So I I believe our engineering staff is on the line as well, and I'll defer the question to them. But I believe all onsite utilities are undergrounded regardless. But the undergrounding overhead utilities would be physically undergrounding the utility poles themselves.
From the utility poles, poles at the southeast corner?
Correct. It could be a much larger project and a much larger expense. So that's part of why we do the deferred improvement agreement option. But the applicant's request is to remove that requirement and any future or current plan to underground those from the condition entirely. But I'll switch to Mark or Seporo if there's anything further on that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions from the commissioners to staff on this item?
Yeah, I have a question. So I was, I was wondering where does, what's driving the requirement to have the utilities put underground in the first place? Is is it coming from a master plan or the general plan? Or or some other rule? I'm just wondering how that got on the the original list of conditions in the first place?
It's a standard condition, but to speak towards a master plan or anything like that, I don't believe so. We have anything in particular about undergrounding. But for all projects, this is the standard condition language.
Okay. So if we did not approve, let's say if we if we did approve this request. Does that mean that the the utilities, utility poles would never be undergrounded?
They would never be undergrounded at this applicant's request, potentially if the city ever had a master project to do massive undergrounding. I believe there are some funds that come from like PG&E and like other funds, so potentially there's like a grant project in the future that we could look towards. Where the power poles could be undergrounded in a larger project by the city. But at this time, I'm not aware of any plans to underground them. So the applicant, it would be either this applicant doing their frontage improvements or contributing to their frontage improvements or leaving it to another project in the future.
Okay, great. I don't have any other questions.
Ms. Eva, in regards to the the site itself, the electricity is routed to the to the structures underground. There's not a tap or a drop coming off of the pole to the to the rooftops of the project, correct?
That is my understanding. And I don't know if Seporo or Mark can confirm that.
Sorry, that wasn't clear. What was the question?
Whether the onsite utilities are undergrounded until they connect to the existing utility poles.
Whether the onsite utilities are undergrounded, like existing utilities?
I think that I I think that you're talking about the new services to the new buildings, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, and and we could ensure that those are fed, the buildings are fed via underground. So we could, we can make sure that that happens.
Who's who's speaking, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark Falgo. I'm helping the engineering department out. It is a city engineer.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners for staff?
Mark, yeah. Just to comment on the the, actually, the requirement of undergrounding utilities. Typically, instead of having overhead utilities, overhead power lines connecting to a a main service and not going over any roof structures. Would it be correct to say is that the reason that we underground utilities to new developments like this from power poles is is for safety reasons?
Yes, I believe so.
With course of storms and to prevent problems with power lines being broken and disrupted by storm activities, for example.
Yeah, certainly being underground helps in that situation.
Mr. Huiboy, this is Abraham. And that is certainly a reason for undergrounding, which is why, as Eva mentioned, is our standard condition to to underground. In this particular case, as you know, most of Old Town in the City of Hollister being, you know, Samneal Street, South Street, Monterey, West Street. There's a lot of existing overhead utilities that have been there since since the inception of of when this community started building. And so therefore, you know, in this case, in this particular case, I mean, we do have that as as an existing condition for projects to be able to underground. But in this case, the applicant is requesting that, you know, if if the planning commission would be able to give him that exemption to not allow for the undergrounding, he would be able to do the rest of the improvements.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Abraham. I'm having trouble hearing you. Can you speak closer to the mic, please?
Sure, sure, sorry. So the reason why the applicant has been requesting to have this exception is because there are existing overhead utilities in the vicinity and the whole and the whole area. And so he's asking that in order for him to move forward with this project. He actually took over this project from a a previous property owner. When we first bought this project, a little bit over a year ago, it was a property owner by the name of Maggie LaSant. This new property owner took over this project and is is hoping to improve it, to actually have the four units there. The the four units that we that the City of Hollister would greatly benefit from, multifamily units, very well designed and and planned planned for. But is really hoping that if if allowed by the planning commission for this exception to 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 get that exception in order for him to to move forward. And he's actually on 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 Zoom as well as a as a potential speaker in case you you have any questions for the applicant as well.
Great, thank you. If there's no other questions from the commissioners for staff, we can go ahead and open this up for the public hearing.
Yeah, let me, I have one question, Commissioner Munzer.
Go ahead.
So and it is, my question is, so I was gonna ask about the surrounding neighborhood. It's Abraham. Thank you for answering that question already. And so my question is, or it's more, I guess, more like a comment. And then I just like a confirmation of that comment is what I'm asking for. So I think that the goal is that as we, as a city, have some of the the development of some of the existing or older structures. The goal is that then they get upgraded so that the overhead utilities go underground, right? So the goal is that as we do that little by little, through attrition, we will eliminate the overhead ones, right? I mean, that's my, that's my thinking. So then this expectation for this one, since it's a new project, would be to do that. And then as other projects come on board to revitalize some of these areas or to reduce some of these areas, that that the same thing would happen. Is that, so I'm just asking for confirmation for of that.
I believe that that is a valid reason for the the standard condition that we have. And undergrounding the utilities, and especially with how densely packed they are in these areas, as Abraham was mentioning. That it it's not very practical to in put on an immediate like underground, you must underground immediately with this project. But I think that's why we put in that deferred improvement agreement option. So that any or all of the the improvements of the frontage for the ultimate improvement, when we see these areas revitalized will as as they can be in our general plan and as their plan to be. When they're revitalized, then we could have an undergrounding project. The city could work on towards a grant or something like that, and something we can talk about in our general plan update and actual policies towards undergrounding. But which we don't have right now. But you would have these properties that have done development over the years and been conditioned to contribute towards that big project, that big expensive project that it will be. They'll contribute towards their fair share at that point.
At this point, we don't have that yet, right? We don't have an anticipative date or a goal. We're expecting that that may be part of the general plan moving forward, but we don't have that yet.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Stevens, earlier we were discussing the safety hazards of it. And PG&E, they do have a program called Rule Number Twenty, Letter A, Rule Twenty A. That works with with communities to provide for credits and essentially funds for ultimately improvements of undergrounding. You know, and so the the funding mechanism for that is a program that that PG&E has. That's that's, it would be great to have more accessibility and be as simple, as simple as for us to be able to say, hey, we have, we have that, we recognize that we, there's there's issues in the in the community in regards to having existing areas that were developed fifty, sixty, seventy years ago, or or the city started developing around it. And then these areas unfortunately don't have sidewalks. And so, you know, the PG&E Rule Twenty A works with communities to to provide funding and and be able to have that mechanism to underground utilities and provide sidewalk curve and gutter. So there, that that thought process is there. It's just the the ability to be able to 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 secure those funds, to secure those grants to do so. And I think that right now with the update of the general plan, it is a good time to to look at that. And as Eva was mentioning, somehow see if we can incorporate a good, a good policy for the future of Hollister to see how we can look at some of these areas to be able to fund undergrounding and provide sidewalk curve and gutter for for some of these areas in our old town or areas where the city has surrounded, such as like in Sunnys, along Sunnyslope Road. Near Fairview or closer to Fairview between Value View and Fairview in those places. So so the thought process is there, PG&E is, has been, you know, working with with staff on that, with with engineers. Development Services Departments throughout California. But, you know, it's always that question in regards to funding. And so, you know, definitely, I think would be a good, a good subject for policy for the update of the general plan to see if that's if the city wants to look into into creating policy for that.
And Abraham, those those types of grants are only available to like like city governments or local governments. It's not something that a developer would could go after on their own, or can they?
So that's a really good question. We're always open for developers, you know, thoughts and and ability to to provide, you know, search for grants. But a lot of these are for public agencies like like or private, like PG&E and or potentially like Caltrans, you know, from time to time, offers various types of grants. You know, for improvements of of public infrastructure, public roads. And so so those are, you know, it's it's more more towards like government type of grants. Definitely, we can be in the lookout for for private as well. But it's it's mainly mainly public agencies.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens for the question. If there's no other questions for staff, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at seven twenty-five. Any speaker cards on this item?
Yes, Chairman Munzer, we have two speakers. First one would be Mr. Carson Clower. Carson, can you hear us? Carson?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. Commission and staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. This project, if built out, would provide much-needed multifamily units. If you've been looking for a rental anytime in the last few years, and especially in the last few months with the housing issues related to COVID and the pandemic. Rental housing is at an absolute minimum in terms of what's available. So if these if these units were built out and made available, that'd put four families in in well-constructed housing. That's the first point I'd like to make. The second point is that by moving forward with this project, please keep in mind that even if the utilities aren't undergrounded. You would, as a city, be getting new curb gutter and sidewalk, because the engineer is gonna walk that with the developer and point out anything that's not up to code at this point. And then also, this project actually brings these two parcels in line with current zoning. Whereas the rest of the neighborhood, it doesn't actually fit the zoning. So please keep that in mind, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Clower. Any other speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Tom Nino. Tom, can you hear us? It may be that it's on mute. If you can mute, unmute your shot.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to review this potential amendment. I just kinda wanna talk about the nature of the project. It's a bit unusual in that there is an existing home with overhead. You know, that's been served here, overhead utilities, but of course, we're gonna underground the utilities from the street to the structure. But there is an existing home on the property. It's gonna been referred to as a new development and it's, you know, there's been homes on both of these parcels for sixty, seventy, eighty years. Even the parcel now that is at the corner of Prospect and Hazel, there was a home there until, oh, maybe ten, fifteen years ago, something like that in there. Then so that, you know, it's a, you know, it's it's new construction. It's not necessarily new development as far as the creation of new lots. Lots have been there. In the home that is existing, you know, it's certainly in very substandard condition. And, you know, it's been a tough situation with trying to figure out how to best utilize the existing home on the property. This situ, when I brought bought this property, it was an oversight on my part to to, you know, if I had known about the condition of having to underground that, it was my fault, it's nobody's fault other than mine, but if I had researched that more carefully. It would be, it's cost prohibitive to do so, to underground, you know, that you're talking about two hundred and thirty feet and a few poles, number of poles, as Commissioner Huiboy had mentioned. And it just makes it cost prohibitive to do so. And so that's why I came to the commission with this request. You know, if, you know, financially, it just wouldn't work to, the cost to do, that would be extraordinary. And all the surrounding neighborhoods have overhead power in these two homes that have been here, there's one remaining, the two homes that have been here have had. You know, been served by overhead power for eighty years. You know, been served by overhead power for eighty years or however long it's been. So I just kinda wanted to give that kind of visual of the, of of, you know, the, the cost and the limitations on any future development. I believe, um, and it, and it was my mistake to, when I bought the property, to, you know, to. Not look into more fully the, the tremendous cost of, of this condition. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for hearing me.
A, a question, Tom. So, uh, I know we have to, I know you, you're, you stated that you're, you're going to go ahead with the. Curtain gutter and sidewalk improvements. At a future time, if the option of about a deferred agreement. And having the underground in the future time, that would be more disruptive to the, to the improvements that you would make in your first phase. Did you consider a like joint trenching, a joint trench with the electrical and the gas lines would be somewhat of a cost-saving measure?
If I'm, thank you for the question of, I'm not, I'm not servicing these properties with gas just for a variety of reasons. One of them, just environmentally, the, the changes there, and so these, you know, but as far as. You know, the, the, um, deferred approver, uh, depr- deferred improvement agreement. You know, in the future, I'm, I'm planning on upgrading the sidewalks if I were to proceed with the, and this curb and gutter. If I were to proceed with the project, you know, at the point of construction. Uh, I had the same situation on, I did some projects on San Benito Street recently. And I improved those sidewalks and the curbs and gutter at the same time. That's something that I'm ready, willing, able and interested in doing at the time of construction. But as far as a deferred improvement agreement on undergrounding power, I just financially now or in the future just wouldn't work for me. It wouldn't work for the economics of the project, I should, I should say, not just for me, I mean, I, if I, you know, I don't know. It would not have a lot of market value in the event that this, you know, I, I don't know what exactly I do, I guess I, you know, have to figure out how to. How to bring the existing home up to a, up to a more livable condition and go forward like that, I guess. Thank you.
And with the cost, uh, the, the cost of the undergrounding of the utilities, uh, did you mention what that, that would be?
I did not mention it because I, that's something that would have to, there'd be a lot of engineering, a lot of time, a lot of work on PG&E's behalf. And I started, uh, and I, I talked to a person about it, but it just, there wasn't, there wasn't um. Any real hard and fast numbers. The only thing that I can tell you there, and this is, you know, not very scientific, but from other people in the past that have done this. It, you know, in the many tens or tens of thousands, many tens of, you know, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars, I don't know how much it'd be. I, that's kind of a haphazard guess, and I hesitate to say what it would be, but it would be extraordinary. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners for the applicant? Okay, if there's no other questions, uh, was there any other speaker cards on this item?
There are no other speaker cards at this time, Chairman.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven thirty-five. We'll bring this back for the uh discussions amongst the commissioners on this item.
Well, I will say this is that as a general principle for undergrounding utilities to new construction. It's, it's well-founded in, in the sense that it provides health and safety to the occupants and to the residents in general. Um, but in this particular context, I think that since there are overhead utilities and. And the fact that we have to balance the community need for a project such as this due to the trying times that we're living in. And the need for, for rental housing, uh, I, I. I'm not excited about granting, granting the approval because I do, I do believe in that the safety measures of, as I said, but. Uh, given everything that, uh, in consideration with the context of this development, um, I, I would. And, and I think that, you know, cost these days, especially with the COVID situation and the price of materials is going up. Extremely high, I, I would, uh, I have to take that in consideration also. And to, I think we need to move this project along and, and grant the request. Given the, given that, those, uh, those reasons. Thank you, Commissioner. Saying that, I would grudgingly grant the request because of the. You know, the weather, the climate change and all that, the, this weather that we're going through in the past few days, for example, with the winds. I would anticipate that from the overhead connection, point of connection, so the, on the. Would be on the, on the east side of the buildings. I know one thing that, that PG&E would front upon any power lines that would go over any roof structures, but. I see a clear route that from an overhead, uh, point of connection that would go to the service panels on the rights. On the right side or the east side of the buildings, make it. I'm not sure about the logistics of the structure on the north, but at least the one that's directly across from the power poles can be. Easily achieved. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Huboy. Any, any other comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I mean, I, um, kind of agree with what Commissioner Huboy. Um, just said, I, um, I guess I worry or I wonder, um. What, what the, whether the, um, expectation of this for future projects. In that, in that area or other areas that have overhead, um, utilities. Um, whether it's always just gonna be cost-prohibited and if it is, and then we will be asked. For this kind of exceptions all the time, then I, I wonder what would be the point of that, of having that as. Um, uh, having that as a requirement, and I also wonder when that was put in place. Um, what, what it, what, was there a thought about what the cost would be and how that would impact projects? Especially more, like smaller projects like this one. Um, I do worry about having, you know, a rule in place and then granting an exception. And then maybe leading to, you know, expectations that the, that they're, that of, or. Or as I said, leading to maybe more requests for exceptions because it is cost prohibitive. Um, so I just worry about having that as an expectation, a requirement. Uh, when maybe in reality, it's not reasonable. Um, so I wonder if somebody could speak to that. Is that just simply because of this project, because it's a smaller size project? Or is this something that we can expect in the future from other projects that might be trying to accomplish the same thing? As uh what's being accom- what, what we're trying to accomplish in this project?
That's a really good question, Commissioner Roxanne Stevens. Thank you for bringing that up. Um, you, you're absolutely right. Um, some of these smaller projects that are like, like, um, uh, Carson mentioned. Are, are s- um, smaller in nature, but they are extremely important for our community. Um, you know, right now, uh, the latest poll and, and our latest report with our update of the general plan indicates that. About eighty percent of the stock in the city of Hollister is single-family, and so we really want to look into providing policy and, and. Direction for more multifamily, and I think this, this is one, little by little with small, with smaller projects or even bigger projects. Um, but like this, smaller projects bringing four families and it's, it's, it's crucial, crucial. Um, I think that, that, um, you know, in probably about two years ago or so. Um, a, along San Benito Street, there was a project, um, called the Old Flower Mill. It's a building that's located basically between Hawkins and, um, I would say South Street, Hawkins and South Street to the, to the east. The Do Curdo Brothers actually built that, um, and when they got approval, there, this condition was there. And, um, they came back to the commission, basically similar to what Mr. Mr. Nino is indicating, saying, hey. Really, we didn't really realize that this condition was in there. As Eva mentioned, it's a standard condition that we have because we expect it in new development, but in these areas like in the old town where there's existing overhead. Um, and there's smaller projects, in that particular case, it was actually eight units, um, and still considered a small project. It, it was really for them as well, cost prohibitive, and so, um, planning commissioner actually did make a, um, an exception to them as well. Um, but one of the things that, um, I'm glad you brought up your question, Commissioner Stevens. One of the things that we can look at and, and in discussions with the city manager earlier today before, before this meeting, I think it was yesterday, actually. We, um, we're thinking, uh, of your same question and the possibility of, of working with the city attorney. To see if there's a possibility for future projects, if, if there're gonna be smaller projects like this where, where, um, you know, it, it is a. Um, it, it is within an area that there's existing overhead utilities, but it's gonna be cost prohibitive and, 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 you know. Basically not see anything developed there or, or improved there because we're gonna require them to underground or, you know. Have the possibility of having something nice there, meeting the general plan like Carson was saying, and actually, you know, providing a good project such as this one. Maybe we can, you know, have some type of policy, um, you know, that we can look and work with the city, city council on to. Um, maybe in the future, establish something that indicates that maybe, maybe provide some type of funding. Either through like the actual, um, project, um, project owners to provide a certain type of funding, maybe not the whole. Cost of it, but a certain percentage, maybe through like an impact fee or something that would provide us with funds. To where we can collect a certain amount of funding to where, when the, you know, when, when the city decides. We can look at undergrounding certain sections of town, um, but that would be, that would have to be a policy that would have to be approved by the, by the city council. Um, and I just wanted to let you know that those conversations are occurring right now. We, we would have to have a legal determination to see if even, you know, what would be legal and, and move with that. And what, what's not legal, not, not consider, but definitely, um, you know, try to establish something for, for the future. Um, of, for, for, for our town.
I, I would agree from, like, if, I still have a little problem hearing you, Abraham, but I, I would agree, and I, I agree with Commissioner Stevens too. I, if we grant this, and it's of, of, uh. If we grant this leniency, this variance on the requirement of undergrounding utilities. I don't want this becoming a precedent for future projects. Now, when you look at, when I look at something like this, I, I, for a variance. And this is not a, a variance of what they're asking for, but they're asking for a revision of this. Condition, uh, I would look at what findings is presented here tonight. To, so we're not, we're not granting something that, that, uh. It's not a good precedent for future development, and I think that what you're saying, Abraham, I think, yes. Uh, for smaller rehabilitation projects, uh, in a, in a context of residential development. Where the other homes have overhead power is pretty ubiquitous in that, in that area. And I know that, uh, in a different, in a different light, if, for example, uh, there is. Consideration given on some, for example, some accessibility improvements that create hardships. Um, this is a different topic, but, um, that access, the accessibility sometimes. A hardship can be granted depending on the circumstances that, that project, um, is undergoing. Uh, and this, we're, we're looking at cost, but we're also looking at. A, a need that the community has a special need for, and it's, and a residential area that is common to have overhead. Power lines, so I think there are findings that are being presented tonight. But I think I would also encourage us to come up with guidelines for future projects. That are pretty clear on whether or not the threshold is met or not. To not or have to require underground utilities. Um, and I, as I said before, is the, the general measure of under, having the underground utilities is important, is important. But if this was like an industrial building, of course, in all-new construction, that'd be a totally different situation there. So I encourage staff to work on some policy in that regard. So we can determine in the future whether or not smaller projects such as this. Meet those, meet, meet the policy, uh, threshold for not having to underground utilities.
I, I agree with that Commissioner Stevens, Huboy are both saying that, uh, if, if this was a, you know. For lack of better words, a cookie cutter development that was, you know, a, a simple project to just say, hey, you know. We just don't want to do the underground, uh, it would be easy to, to say that, um, you know, to set a standard. That we're making an exception for it, but i- in this situation, you know, these projects are, um, unique. Each area is unique, uh, this is the older part of, of town that still has overhead power. And the applicant is, you know, the improvements on the site, they're running the, uh, utilities underground. Um, this is in regards to the frontage road in which there's still existing power poles. That is just not, um, cost-effective to, to put all that underground, and that's where I think we would have to look at these. Each project individually, um, and, and make a, a decision on whether it's, you know, something that would benefit the community. And, and I would say that, uh, this project itself, it ben- definitely benefits the community and, and, um. You know, the surrounding area still has the existing overhead power. So that's, uh, that's what I have in regards to comments on this. So with that being said, if there's no other comments from the commissioners?
Um, I just have a quick comment. So, yeah, to me, this seems like this was a, an oversight, you know, even for the first applicant. Um, because I'm sure the first applicant made, would have seen that it would have been a cost prohibitive thing. But it just kind of, I mean, there's a hundred conditions that are on these things, so I think for the future, it would be good. For staff to, um, just kind of make sure that the, the conditions are appropriate for the situation. I mean, a, a brand-new development is a lot different from improving, um, one on lot on a, on a block. In an older part of the community, so, yeah, to me, it just seems unfair to, um, put the, uh, burden of. Undergrounding utilities on, you know, one, one small project. Uh, I mean, if it was the entire block that was being redone by a developer, I would, might have a different opinion. But, uh, so, yeah, I, so I pretty much agree with everything that's been said, and, and that's my comment. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Henderson, uh, with the, that being said, there's no other comments, uh, what is the pleasure of the commission on this item? I'll move forward making the, uh, motion to adopt a resolution amending PC Ri- Resolution Number.
Twenty twenty-one dash three.
Twenty twenty-one dash three to grant the applicant's request to amend Condition Sixty-two for the right-of-way improvements as described. Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and second, further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 And for the record, any notes? All right, congratulations to the applicant and good luck with the project. Okay, moving on to, uh, that was the last item on the agenda, any new business?
No new business, Chairman Munzer.
Any old business?
None at this time, thank you.
Been quite a few months in between our last meeting and this one, there's no business?
We'll, we'll address it at the. We'll, we'll address it at the, at the planning department reports right now.
Okay, planning, planning department report. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Munzer, for this opportunity. We would like to indicate that our precious city engineer, Danny Hilstock, who you've seen here, meeting after meeting, since December, actually retired from the city of Hollister. He was an employee for many, many years, provided a lot of civil service and worked really hard, you know, in, in providing the best, the best engineering for, for the city. We're going to miss him very much. We are happy for him. We communicate from time to time via, via text or whatnot. And he's indicated that he's, he's doing very well. So we're really happy for him and wish him the very best. So, yeah, just wanted to indicate that as our first comment. Second comment is that the city of Hollister is very fortunate to have, and my apologies for not introducing them earlier. In the meeting, we had it set for our planning department reports. But we have Mr. Mark Faogo. Mr. Mark Faogo is our acting city engineer, very knowledgeable person. He is an experienced senior project manager with a demonstrated history of working in the civil engineering industry, skilled in drainage, water resource management, site development, submittals, and earthworks. Strong program and project management professional with a bachelor's degree focused in civil engineering from CSU Chico. And so Mark Faogo is actually in our Zoom right now, has been really helpful. And so we really, really appreciate his, his presence and him being part of our, of our community and our city development services team. So thank you, Mark. Just wanted to indicate that.
Welcome.
Welcome, Mark.
What, what, where did you get your degree, Mark?
At Chico, CSU Chico.
All right. Okay, welcome on board. Now, this Danny, I've worked, been working with Danny for several years. And I enjoyed our working relationship, did a good job, and wish him all the luck in the world.
Yeah, same, same here. I really enjoyed working with Danny also.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Also wanted to indicate that the city of Hollister, I mentioned at various times during the various presentations tonight, is working on an update of our general plan. We have had a lot of success, you know, had various meetings already with the public, even though we're struggling to, due to COVID. But in, in-person meetings, however, staff, planning staff, Eva, Amber, Adeli has, have done a really good job in coordinating with PlaceWorks, our consultant, in reaching out to the public and setting up these Zoom meetings and, and having all these different meetings through, through teleconference, the new, the new type of, you know, in our information system now in our society. And so that's going, that's going really good. We are at the point where we have had two general plan advisory committee meetings already. And in our last general plan advisory committee meeting, we talked about creating policy for our new update of the general plan. And with that, we reviewed existing conditions from various documents that we have, from, you know, transportation to aesthetics to agriculture and looking at ways where we can implement policy. So that, that's what we're working right now. So hopefully, our third general plan advisory committee is, is tentatively for March. And at that time, we're hoping to, to review a list of draft policies for, for our general plan update. And also wanted to indicate that we have also heard in our second general plan advisory committee meeting that we should incorporate more of an interface between the city and the county. So right now, we've had so far two meetings with the county. One was between city development services and city and county's RMA office. The second meeting was with the city and the county and LAFCO. Because as we know, you know, sphere of influence and annex, future annexations are going to be a real key for the future of Hollister. And we are expecting to have at least three more meetings between the city and the county and then report back to our general plan advisory committee to address that. And, you know, that's just a very brief summary of all the work that's been going on. We generally meet in a weekly basis, staff and the consultant PlaceWorks, to go over all the agenda items and, and all the items for discussion. And so again, our next meeting is tentatively for March, general plan advisory, and we'll continue to move on in that update.
Great, thanks, Abraham.
If I may chime in there too, Abraham, being a member of the GPAC committee. The, it's the last, last meeting, we had the existing conditions and they were sent to me electronically. And I looked at all the pages that were involved, printed, printed everything out. And so I, I thought I'd call Amber and Eva to see if they could help me out. Not only did they print everything out for me, but they indexed them all with little index cards and index tabs. And when above and beyond the call of duty in that regard, and that really helps keep me organized. And I really, really appreciate that. I mean, it's just, it, it goes without, it speaks volumes for how, how hard our staff works on the general plan update. And makes it all that more enjoyable that I don't have to get involved in printing things out and three-hole punching them and putting little index tabs on all the different categories, which they did for me very cheerfully. Did a great job. So I just wanted to say that. Really appreciate it. Thanks.
Any word on if the, the GPAC is going to be fully, fully staffed with the full committee?
We hope, we hope that that occurs soon, Commissioner Henderson. I don't have a latest update on that, but definitely hopeful that, 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 that occurs sooner rather than later.
Great, thanks, Abraham, for the update. Any planning commission reports?
Commissioner Munzer, before we move to planning commission reports, can I just add on to the general plan report quickly that in addition to the actual third GPAC meeting that we're planning to schedule for March sometime, we are scheduling, and I apologize, I don't have the exact times, but on March ninth and ten, we're going to have two public workshops, so not GPAC meetings, but public workshops. I believe one we're going to hold in the morning sometime, and then we're going to hold one in the evening, again, March ninth and tenth. And those will be public workshops to talk about policies that will be heard on the next upcoming several GPAC meetings. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Eva. Any other updates from planning? Okay, well, moving on, if there was no commission reports to discuss, the next meeting is Thursday, February twenty-fifth at six PM. And I will make?
Commissioner Munzer, can I just make one quick comment?
Yes, please.
I don't have a report, but I did want to thank planning staff for arranging for me to participate in the League of Cities Conference that happened just after our last planning commission meeting. I had not had the opportunity to thank them for coordinating and getting me registered, getting a pay, making sure that I was able to connect because it was a virtual one. And there was, it, it, pretty much everything went without a glitch. So I wanted to appreciate staff for that and let them know that even though it wasn't in person, which, you know, you know, you lose a lot of the opportunities to network and to really get to know some of the other folks that are in attendance. It was a really interesting and compelling conference, and I learned a lot. And more than anything, the experience, I mean, whenever you go to a conference, I mean, I think what you hope for is that it kind of renews your commitment to what you're doing. It reminds you why you're doing what you're doing and, and it motivates you to just keep going forward. Not, and, and not only that, but also to, to bring some like fresh new ideas. And it was a lot of that in this, in this conference. I just wanted to thank the staff for arranging that and, and just, you know, just thank you. And, and I'm looking forward to, you know, the day that we can do it again in person. But that even as a virtual experience, it was, it was really incredible. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you for sharing. Okay, any other last minute comments from the commissioners? All right, you guys, let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting at eight oh two. You guys have a good evening and we'll see you next month.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night, thank you.